I'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to the September thirteenth. City of Walton and regular city council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, which be led by Council Pratt.
Please place your hands over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives through the COVID nineteen led by Council Brooks.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and also after um. A very mindful weekend celebrating or remembering the twenty year anniversary of nine eleven. And the people that we lost then and during the. COVID crisis now where we are um. Wanting to be really careful around our hospital systems and being safe. Um, please join me in. In uh. Remembering and being mindful of those that are still suffering and that we've lost through COVID nineteen. Thank you.
You. I just want to follow up with the. Comment made by Council Brooks about, you know. Nine eleven this past weekend and just want to remember all the folks who lost their lives. In New York City and in Shanksville and at the Pentagon. Um, as many of you know, I was born and raised in Long Island, New York. And I knew three people passed away. At the World Trade Center, I just want to remember them. Uh, there were two brothers, Mark and Stephen Kaleo, who I went to elementary school with. Uh, Stephen was thirty-two, Mark was thirty-four. They uh worked at Cantor Fitzgerald. And we're on the hundred and fourth floor, so um they had the unfortunate. Lot, if you will, that they were right where the planes hit. And then George Howard um was a poor authority police officer. He was the older brother. Of my childhood best friend. He was lieutenant. Uh, in the Port Authority Police, he's also a captain in our local fire department. He was actually off that day. And decided he was going to go in, just like all the emergency responders did. They rushed in versus ran away. Uh, he's helping people guide, he's helping guide people out of the World Trade Center. When debris landed on him and killed him. Of note here, why George super special? Is that his mother, Arlene, uh, was at the site when President Bush came to visit. And somehow his mother pushed by the Secret Service. And got to President Bush and gave George, gave President Bush. George's badge, which is badge number ten, twelve. And if you remember, uh, at the first day of the Union. After nine eleven, President Bush held that badge up. And he carries it with him to this day. Uh, George's badge and one of the things I give credit for President Bush is he has kept. In touch with the Howard family since he's been, you know, since he left office, he's still in touch. So it's why I remember those, you know, those who lost their lives and the families and families were devastated, so. It was a terrible day and um I hope you had a chance to watch the memory, uh, remember summary. On that on nine eleven, it was well, five hours long, but yes, it was phenomenal. And with that. We'll go ahead and move to announcements. So our first announcement is declaring the month of September twenty twenty-one. As emergency preparedness month in the city of Walton. And this proclamation would be read by Council Pratt.
And I think we have a staff.
Presentation.
We have a little staff.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lindsay Marshall here. I'm a management analyst. To an information and maintenance services and one of the large parts of my role at the city is working on emergency management, so. Um, just wanted to say a couple of things, the the proclamation this month. And for September as National Preparedness Month that will. Bring the city of Walton um in with much of the rest of the nation and recognizing this month. And as kind of a moment to think about preparation and. You know, it's not been a dull moment recently in that, in that world, and so we've got. A lot of things to reflect on and then things to engage with in terms of preparing for a variety of types of emergencies, so. Taking the month of September is a great time to spend some time actively engaging. And reflecting on our preparation for a variety of things. And then later on, um, in the agenda, we have a, an annual part from our. Community Emergency Response Team. And we are lucky and fortunate to have a wonderful relationship with Tuolton Cert. Um, for years now and Kathy Holland or their fearless leader uh is here to tell you all about things that they've been doing. Especially during the pandemic, our program is one of the few in around locally that have still been engaging actively in. Um, training team members and we're having new classes and engaging in activities, so. They've been fantastic and I'm looking forward to having everybody hear the great things that they've been up to and. We're just really grateful to have them as a part of our community. Thank you. Off to you, Council Pratt.
Creating the month of September two thousand twenty-one as emergency preparedness month in the city of Tuolton. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in September. To encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, schools. And whereas disasters often strike quickly with little or no warning. And residents might be forced to evacuate neighborhoods, schools and work sites. Or be confined to homes and. Whereas the world has grumbled with the COVID nineteen pandemic, which has impacted the nation and city. For extended periods of time. Requiring residents to prepare differently for other disasters that may affect their community and. Whereas the challenges posed posed by climate change such as more intense storms, heat waves, drought. Wildfires and extreme flooding could significantly alter. The types and magnitudes of hazard faced by communities and whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of the city of Tuolton, Oregon. And all residents are urged to make preparedness as a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals. Families and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas the city supports and encourages citizen participation. In the Tuolton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. So our community can be prepared, trained and respond to emergencies. And whereas the city of Tuolton participates in the Great Shakeout Drill each October. To promote earthquake awareness, awareness for employees and. Whereas individuals, neighborhoods, businesses and communities can all take steps. Increase their resilience and look out for one another when major emergencies or disaster strike. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed by the city, Tuolton City Council, that September. Two thousand twenty-one is emergency preparedness month and encourages all residents and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan. And work together for creating a more prepared community introduced and adopted this thirteenth day of September two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Right. Uh, now we move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments about three minutes. If there's anyone in this, this, if there's anyone in this Zoom meeting. Who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Bates, do you have anybody at the poll center?
Uh, yes, Mayor Adam Klein has wished to speak.
All right, welcome, Adam.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to uh to speak. My name is Adam. I live. At one seven eight zero zero Southwest one hundred eleventh by Hiza Brook Middle School. Um, and I was born and raised here and I've recently graduated um. Uh, college and I'm a big runner in the, in the community. And the other day I was um running um around Cook Park. One of my favorite loops is down ninety-nine W Cook Park and then back through Tuolton Park. Um, and I, and I thought, I think um. It would be a great opportunity uh for the city to increase um. People in both Tigard and Tuolton for the use of Jergens Park and Cook Park if there was potentially some sort of pedestrian bridge. Built um between the river. Now I know that a lot of the Tuolton River is occupied by the country club. And by neighborhoods, but. Between Jergens Park and the opposite side of the river is just one small trail that eventually connects to Cook Park. Um, I wasn't sure the exact avenue to bring this to the city's attention, but um. I, I have photos as well if there's, if there's a need for clarification of, of what I'm um referring to, but. That's uh, yeah, that's what I, what I came here to, to say.
Thank you. I'd say, yes, shoot your idea off to our city manager or to our parks folks. Uh, with any photos you have, it's a. That idea has come up a few times to make it easier to get over to Cook Park. But I'd love to see your ideas and take a look at it.
Okay, and who would I, who would I contact for that?
Do you have, you wanted, said to Charlene, you wanted to send to you or to Ross or?
Um, probably Ross. So Adam, I will put this in the chat, um, the contact information um to contact.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Uh, anyone else, Bates, that you're aware of?
Uh, that is all I have for tonight. No one is at the poll center.
All right, uh, open the floor for anyone else. For a public comment. All right, seeing none, I'll then move on to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda, all those items are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion. Unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of three items. Item number one. Consideration of approval of the work session or regular meeting minutes of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And a special meeting of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Item two, consideration of approval of a liquor license application for Pizza Monk LLC DBA Bella Pizza. And finally, item number three, consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application. For Terra Coffee and Wine Bar slash Doja Tea Lounge. But any city council like any of these items removed from consent tonight and heard later.
I'll move to uh prove the consent agenda is red.
Second.
Any discussions on the motions? Right, Council Hillier.
Hi.
So Pratt.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grine, wait, no, Council Pratt, sorry, Dibery. Council Pratt.
Hi again.
Yep, all right, the whole screen shifted. I mean, Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote yes also, so it's unanimous. All right. Moving on to our special report and our special guest. The annual report from the Tuolton Community Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as CERT for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam President. Um, do a little technology here. Hopefully this all will work. Can you all see it? The screen?
No.
No. Lindsay, can you, it says it's failed to start. Please try again later. Lindsay, can you help us?
Yes, I will get it pulled up for you here right now.
It doesn't want to talk to my PowerPoint.
It's part of, sir, you're always prepared and have a backup plan.
Yes, we do, sometimes several.
All right, whoops. All right, Kathy, just tell me when to go forward and I will.
That's great. Um, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, uh, we're delighted, the CERT team's delighted to have a chance to talk to you about. A very interesting eighteen months. Next slide.
Oops, sorry. There we are.
Um, all of our uh local team procedures were adjusted for COVID. Um, it had considerable impact. When the city shut down in March twenty twenty, we didn't hold a team meeting for sixty days as we were reworking our procedures. We weren't real sure exactly how we were going to move forward, but we were. Uh, very anxious to keep the team moving. Next slide. Uh, right now, uh, our recap, our stats, we have a hundred and nine active members, that is. Uh, qualified, basic, uh, trained members with four or more activities in the last twelve months. We have a hundred and sixty-five people on our roster. Um. The difference is that they were not, uh, they're not considered active unless they do at least four activities a month, or four activities a year. We now have eighty-seven ham radio license operator. Uh, Mr. Mayor will remember when we had eight, so we've really grown the number of emergency ham radio operators. We've established through the CIOs, emergency neighborhood communication hubs, the CIOs have used their. Uh, grant money uh to purchase uh. Antennas and powerful radios and equipment that we can set up. Uh, so the community has a place to get help. And there, uh, those locations are set up in the schools or in the parks depending on. Um, the which CIO we're in. We did offer uh online basic training for spring twenty twenty. We finished that up uh in June of twenty twenty. We had a fall class and a spring class. Uh, this year, the re, the way we did it is we went. Away from in-person training to online training. Uh, through a FEMA course at the University of Utah. This was an online course that was offered free of charge and in conjunction with FEMA. Then we just completed the hands-on training using COVID uh protocol in August and. Uh, just last Saturday, so we finished up uh that class. Next slide. How did we keep training and remain an active team? Well, Zoom. Uh, which I didn't even know what it was in March of twenty twenty. Became the vehicle for monthly meetings and also for our training. Next, next, we adopted masks. Uh, we have every political uh. Point of view the city has, but we as a team adopted masks as a uh. A requirement for any in-person contact along with gloves, safety glasses and other protection. Next slide. And we encouraged vaccinations, but again, not all of our team members are vaccinated. Next slide. Why did we keep active? We could have shut down. Well. We're of an age where we know that weather and other emergencies can still happen. And if they do happen, we may need to step forward and help protect our neighbors and ourselves. Our earthquake risk remains. It hasn't gone away. We just haven't been talking about it much. And if, if there's a significant earthquake, either in the Cascadia Subduction Zone. Or in the West Hills, which has also been studied by Washington County Emergency Management. Tuolton will be on its own for weeks. And being on our own means without gas, water, power, natural gas or transportation systems. We also have the special risk from. Major flooding from Hague Lake Dam, although the county and Corps of Engineers have studied. How to uh repair or replace that dam, it still has not been done. And flooding from the dam is about three days away, so once it breaks. We're going to have some water coming at us. Next slide. The other program we have, which we're very excited about is Tuolton Neighborhood Ready, where we do training for a neighborhood group. Uh, we've expanded that training to Zoom training. Uh, the poll center also allowed us to offer some classes through their. Uh, enrollment program and, and those were very successful. We also held our classes outdoors. Uh, in cul-de-sacs, uh, the photo shows one of those. Where people had sort of social distance, but they are outdoor. We did five of those classes. Our rough count of the number of residents and employees, and we do have a business program and we have done training for businesses. Is about seven hundred and fifty people since two thousand nineteen. Next slide. The city of Tuolton mobilized us uh in February of this year. The storm cleanup, which was. Very needed and very popular throughout all the neighborhoods. We responded within twenty-four hours of getting the call of having sixty volunteers take uh four shifts over five days. Uh, our effort eliminated uh the need for the city to provide employees to do our tasks and it was. It was very rewarding because it was a much needed project and we are so glad the city did it. Next slide. Our other mobilization was by Washington County. We provided in March and April at multiple vaccine. Clinics, uh, twenty uh volunteers who took shifts to help. The medical staff move the population through uh. Through the, their center and that was at Saint Anthony's Church in Tigard. Next slide. What are our challenges for this next year? Well, the pandemic is still with us. It makes any kind of person-to-person contact more challenging. Uh, we still have a lot of neighbors who are afraid. They're afraid of their unvaccinated neighbors. Uh, and then there are unvaccinated people who aren't afraid. And it's just a kind of an awful mix, so. It is, what we've been trying to do is keep our volunteers safe by using good protocol. And just muscle our way through this, this issue, trying to help every neighbor we can. Next slide. But overall, I'd say our CERT program outlook is bright in spite of the bumps that COVID has given us. And I credit Lindsay uh Marshall and Clay Reynolds. They've been wonderful to work with. Uh, Clay adjusted our role so that if there was a medical or a significant emergency. We cut out our medical uh operations uh so that we wouldn't be transporting anyone. Uh, we sat down and said, okay, how do we keep your volunteers safe and still help the neighborhoods? And we were able to come up with a plan that was workable and. More importantly, since we're all volunteers, it was very, it was acceptable to the majority of our volunteers. And then speaking of the businesses and residents in Tuolton, they have been so open to us. I mean, we're running around with our plastic helmets, but I think they understand exactly what we're trying to do. And they are very supportive. On the news front, we have added uh two new CERT uh members who are Spanish speakers. And they have agreed to go through the FEMA training to become trainers for the Tuolton team. We've had Spanish-speaking volunteers before, but these are the first two that are willing to do the additional forty hours of training that they would need to become a trainer. We also used a program from Washington County. That provided uh four three-hour sessions in Spanish to the uh. Community here in Tuolton in two thousand nineteen. But since COVID has hit, Washington County Public Health hasn't had time to help us and we understand completely. So that's our presentation. Uh, we're optimistic. Lindsay, you want to take her down? I'll be glad to answer any questions uh you have. I probably have enough information at my fingertips to talk for seven and a half hours, so. Feel free to ask any questions you want. If I don't have the answer, I'll get back to you.
Questions for Kathy? Council Pratt.
Well, first I want to thank you, Kathy, and all the CERT members and Lindsay and Clay and everybody um for having this program. It's just a wonderful thing. Um. You know, especially in particular that storm response and the cleanup because that. Um, man is pretty well-known throughout her region and it was kind of a source of pride to be able to say, yeah, that's our city. But um, and one thing I think we've all learned this last eighteen months, um, is that emergencies will happen. And we don't necessarily know what they might be, so I'm wondering if um as part of your CERT training you go through, I know we. We all expect or know that we could have a devastating earthquake at some time, the Cascadia, but do you go through different scenarios with different types of disasters to prepare people?
Yeah, we do. Uh, the Tuolton Ready focuses on fire. And weather, uh, storms, ice storms and. Uh, because those are the most common. I mean, we prepare for a devastating shutdown of the city. But that makes us better prepared for an ice storm where uh part of the city loses power. But even with the preparation, we have an extensive document that our members prepared. Things they didn't realize when they lost power from the ice storm. I mean, these are people who have spent years preparing and even they found that there were some things they weren't ready to tackle, so. It's uh, the, really the readiness is for uh fire. Weather, because those are the most likely. And then if we're prepared for that devastating event, let's just hope it doesn't happen.
Other questions for Kathy? Council Brooks.
Um. I wanted to say thank you as well and to all the CERT volunteers um. And to everybody that works with the city to help with this and I do agree with Council Pratt around. Just understanding that resiliency is a big issue for communities now and um. And all the different ways that we're looking at that and I feel that this year has been the less, you know, it's just been the um, the pilot program for. Global warming and what's going to happen. So I wanted to particularly give a shout out to you for being safe during COVID. And for the team also responding and going and helping in clinics and not everyone's comfortable doing that kind of work. I know what healthcare. And clinical work is, and so for volunteers. To go into situations um that are healthcare settings is uh takes a certain kind of courage and awareness, so. I want to do a special thank you to that and the first responders right now. In the pandemic, I think are really feeling it and so any support. That we can give in the community and CERT stepping up in that way is something that I feel really proud about. I also. Went through the train, the, one of the trainings for the neighborhood readiness and. The amount of things that I learned. I don't have everything under my bed that I should, but I do. I do have water in my garage and so um it's progress. And I want to keep learning and I know that there's so much for all of us to keep learning and um. So thanks for having seven hours of information and being an encyclopedia. And um, and I hope we don't need it. I, when you bring up this dam at Hague Lake too. I just wonder, how do we push on that? And maybe the mayor's thought about our people in previous administrations, but that's something that I really appreciate you bringing up because. That sounds concerning and um. A place that we could be investing that I would. Feel more comfortable than some of the other choices the county's been making. Let's put it that way. Thanks.
Well, the Hague Lake, um, the dam has been subject of. I mean, years and years and years of wrangling to get money. I know both senators Merkley and Wyden constantly ask for money to pay for the, you know, it's millions and millions of dollars to replace that dam. And uh, it's way beyond the ability of the county to do. So both our senators have and all our representatives in Congress have always been asking for money, but it never comes through to fix the dam. You know, it's.
Well, maybe something on the infrastructure projects because that's what that's supposed to be targeted towards and I know that um. Senator Wyden's very focused on that right now in the Budget Committee, so thanks. That's good info.
Other questions for Kathy? Oh, I got, oh good, Council President Graves.
Thank you. It's not so much a question, it's just a giant compliment. This is just an excellent program and you have just shown fantastic leadership in getting this up and running and keeping it going. I mean, the number of active certified trained volunteers is amazing. And the fact that we're up to eighty-seven ham operators, I think that that's just fantastic. And I know I see in my area practices or drills, I know we've had one out at the elementary school here in the middle of our community. So I know people are continually practicing and, you know, learning and getting ready for the community and I just, I think it's just a marvelous thing that you've done. And I commend you and all the volunteers for all the hard work. And I know Kathy, you have really been a very strong leader to this and I appreciate that. And we are already in your debt and God forbid something happens.
Well, thank you, Madam President. There's, there's something that is so profound about the volunteers who step forward. Again, we have every political belief possible, but they are the kindest people in the world and they are able to work together because they really want to help neighbors, every one of them. And it isn't just one person, I just happen to be the one with the PowerPoint tonight. We have a board of nine people that are remarkable. If you have time, you can go on our website and get, it's at tuolatincert.org. And it's a, it links to our member website, which you can't have access to, but it gives a brief overview of our program. And again, we couldn't do any of this without these volunteers. I mean, it would just need me in a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm so proud of them. And every time I meet new ones, I'm just overwhelmed by their generous spirit.
As Council President Graves just said, Kathy, I thank you very much for running this over all the years. Remember when you started this up and had the gentleman over from Tigard help us get this launched?
Right.
You, you just ran with this over the years and you've attracted people to be part of this program. I know the ham operator test is not the easiest to pass. And that, so lots of people were challenged by it, but to get up to eighty-seven is amazing that, that's terrific because it's not just, you know, an easy thing, you've got to be certified as a ham operator.
Well, they're, they're a network throughout the city, which means if cell towers are down, we can still get information out.
That's going to be super important and we get across the United States.
Yes, oh yeah.
Network of ham operators as a whole.
They can go, some of these guys are talking to people all over the world every night.
Exactly. So I just want to bring up the, the ice storm and you mentioned it, you know, the lack of electricity that you've learned a lot. That's one of the things I learned is, okay, we didn't have electricity just for a few days. You've realized it fairly quickly. And back in the old, I mean, when we started CERT, or when you started CERT, you know, we were told just have enough food and water for a few days. And now it's have it for weeks. I've taken a heart, because I live so close by to Kathy, is I've got a ton of freaking water in my garage and Costco now sells like survival meal kits.
Yeah.
That you can buy, they'll last you a couple, three weeks. Got a bunch of those in the garage, so you know, I've appreciated you helping me out with this and the city. And look forward to more, you know, that when we need you, you'll be there and we can rely on our CERT team members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Graves?
Thank you. I also want to mention in the chat, Rocky, I thought had a really interesting idea about using some of the CIO money, the allotted budget per community organization to maybe invest in some generators. So that when we do have emergency situations, whether it's people that are on lifesaving equipment or oxygen or just individual communities that could use a generator for, you know, warmth, electricity, communication, charging cell phones, whatever it might be, that's kind of a neat idea. I don't know who could follow up with that.
Well, we, I saw his question and it, we are, we do have members who have generators. But we talked about the communication hubs having generators. What we tried is we have solar panels and a trickle charge down to a battery that has a mechanism so you can plug in things to charge in, charge up, other than a transformer that allows you to charge up your phone and that kind of thing. What we discovered in the ice storm is panels are not worth very much. We need many more panels, so now we're exploring generators. The problem with generators is they need fuel. So if we're stuck for two or three weeks, we may not have enough fuel, so I think it is a good thing for us to be talking about, but we need to solve the fuel problem. Generators run on propane, see now you be careful now, we're going to go in the weeds. Propane, propane stores well, but the efficiency of propane is less than diesel. So these guys who are exploring it, and I think it is a question worth exploring. And you may see on the grant requests, these buy fuel generators, which could either be diesel or propane, because we're, we're not sure what fuel is going to be available. The second thing we're thinking about, and I think you've probably know this, Washington County is doing an analysis on buildings that could be used to house people who may have lost their housing. And Lindsay could probably talk to that. They've hired a consultant to do it, they're doing an analysis of the area. We already have an opinion of where, where they might be. But that's another question, if we have a lot of people who've lost their housing, where can they be? The other problem we have is I-5. We may have a lot of people there who can't stay in their cars, who don't belong to us. Where do we put them? So there's a lot of long-term planning questions that Lindsay and Washington County are looking at. In addition to, do we have enough fuel to run all the generators?
True.
So it's, it's good to be with people who like to think these problems through.
Yeah. I was in a presentation, and I know you know this Kathy, that in the events, the Casciar earthquake, that most of our supplies can be dropped via Redmond.
Right.
And have to be transported from Redmond to here because of duplication of a lot of the area around us, whereas Redmond is not subject to that. So they've, a lot of people working years on these plans and revising and updating. And it's, what's nice about it is there's a regional planning network who are working on this, you know, between Oregon and Washington, make sure we have really good plans.
Yeah, and, and every time they do something, it's a good thing. But what we assume is that nobody's coming for a while. And we're concerned about people who are older, who are in their homes. That's why Neighborhood Ready is so important. If you get to know, we found in doing one of our neighborhood meetings that people thought that a lady that came and went in the morning and the evening lived there, but she wasn't, she was a caregiver for a woman who was bedridden. This was a neighbor, they did not know they had a bedridden neighbor. But with Tuolatin Neighborhood Ready, you get to meet your neighbors. And this would be a very vulnerable person in a crisis. So we're, we just assume it's going to be bad. Like me trying to get my PowerPoint to show up. I told Lindsay, I'm not sure it'll call up, so we had a backup.
All right. And then, you know, to wrap this up, you and I have had discussions about, you know, kids coming home from school.
Yeah.
The parents, their parents are downtown Portland, working or somewhere else, they can't get back. You know, we got to keep an eye on the kids in the neighborhood also, in addition to the elderly.
Yeah, and stranger danger is taught. So if they don't know their neighbors, how is the neighbor going to invite them over?
Right, exactly. Well, thank you very much Kathy.
Welcome.
That does the reality and how important this is in our area.
Thank you.
All right. So looking at the agenda and that, we're up to items removed from consent agenda, there were none. Any council communications? Council Pratt?
Just want to mention, because I think it's kind of exciting that the Tuolatin Sustainability Network on Wednesday from some eight-thirty is going to have Suzy Peterson talking about backyard habitat certification in Tuolatin. So if anybody's interested, you could go to tusn.org and it's batch slash blog or you can just scroll down to where it says events and it directs you to click on the blog. And it'll tell you how to get on that Zoom meeting. I just, I think it's a great program, so wanted to let people know.
Anyone else? I got two items I spaced on when I was racing through my events. I forgot about, this afternoon, I attended the Aging Task Force meeting. Kudos to Steve Cooper or Cooper and Mike McCarthy. They were peppered with questions related to transportation in the city, you know, what, what's going on with it and the Tuolatin Moving Forward Program, questions about In-N-Out Burger, all kinds of questions. And they did a great job answering the questions for the Aging Task Force. And the other thing is just a heads up for city staff, transportation-related staff. ODOT announced that the Connect Oregon applications, the window is going to open on the fifteenth and stay open through the twenty-ninth of October. And they have forty-six million dollars to fund projects this year. So if there's anything we want to get done in the city, the Connect Oregon application process starts Wednesday. We'll go through the end of October and it takes, I guess the evaluation is quite a while before we might see any money if we apply for something. But I want to let staff know that Ryan Windshimer brought that up today. Council Reyes?
Yeah, I just, in this council communication section, I just want to say that this month, on the, starting the September fifteenth through October fifteenth, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And so since the, I think the second largest population within Tuolatin is our, are the Spanish speakers, I just thought I'd bring that up and make sure that we are communicating that to our community and is to remember all the Spanish-speaking countries from Latin America. Some of these countries will celebrate their Independence Day starting, I want to say the fifteenth through the end of, through middle of October, so Central American countries, Mexico and some South American countries. So I thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we have a motion to adjourn for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of the motions? All those in favor, raise your hands and say hi.
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 All right, thank you everyone, good evening.